Okay, Mayor DuBois, we're live.
Great, thank you. Could I, clerk, excuse me, please call the role?
Yes, of course. Vice Mayor Burt.
Sorry, here.
Councilmember Cormac, here. Mayor DuBois.
Here.
Councilmember Phil Seth.
Here.
Councilmember Koo.
Here.
Councilmember Stone.
Here.
Councilmember Tanaka. Six present.
Great, thank you. So tonight, we're doing interviews for the Planning and Transportation Commission, which will be 15 minutes long, and the Historic Resources Board, which will be 10 minutes long. And the interviews are kind of interspersed based on the schedule. So if we could go ahead and start with the first candidate, which I think is Ed Lowing.
Yes, so our first candidate is the incumbent Ed Lowing. I will promote you right now. If you can turn on your video and unmute, we'll begin the interview.
We can see you now, Ed. So you've done this before, there's 15 minutes. If you want to spend a minute on like an opening comment, that'd be great, and then we'll take questions.
Okay, thanks. So I, as you know, just completed 11 years of consecutive service on city commissions, seven years on parks and four on PTC. So quite simply, I'd like to leverage all that experience for a second term on PTC. In a commission seat, when I hold it, I'm always there. I'm always well-prepared, very engaged, and I'm not ideological on the issues I listen. I've got many accomplishments over the years documenting my efforts with colleagues to get things done from new dog parks to new zoning. PTC obviously deals with the toughest issues in our city, so I'm highly motivated to take them on in a second term with the top priority being truly affordable housing. That's not about green quotas, that's about diversity. So welcome to questions.
Great, thank you. So go ahead and raise your hands, councilmembers, if you'd like to ask a question. Councilmember Phil Seth.
Sure. Hey, Ed, thank you very much for reapplying. So I got a question, you've been on the PTC for a little while now. So from what you've learned, you know, how can, how can we as council make the best possible use of PTC? And are there things that we ought to be doing differently than we have in the past?
Love that question, and I only have 15 minutes to answer it. So I'll try to tick them off. One, make sure we're busy. We're not, we shouldn't be a part-time commission, and that's basically what we've been for the last two years. Two, set up us to be strategic, to help you on your strategic efforts. Third, when something is delegated to staff to bring to PTC, please follow up on it. There are many instances of that not happening, and we've never gotten the issues to work for you. And four, look at some areas to potentially take our votes and put it directly on consent calendar. I worked briefly on that with Councilmember Tanaka and Mayor Fine last year to get started doing that, and then it never came to fruition, so I'd like to get that restarted.
Can you give me, on the, on the third one, the follow-up on issues, can you give an example of that?
I mean. Thirty, thirty-five, thirty-five parking recommendations that I think happened in 18. We eventually got three of them instead of 35 packed into a different report. And then more recently, in new housing downtown, was supposed to come to us, it didn't. After a year, it came back to you, and staff said, let's just forget about it. Let's, let's, let's remove it. And you guys correctly said, no, it needs to go back to PTC where we, where we wanted it to go.
Councilmember Stone and then Councilmember Cormac.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know Councilmember Cormac had her hand up before me, if she'd like to go first.
Just go ahead.
Okay, I have just one question. Hi, Ed, it's good to, good to see you again. You mentioned affordable housing being one of your kind of key priorities, and I know I've heard you talk about it in the past. Are there any kind of specific, specific plans on how the city can be handling affordable housing better and how we can actually kind of really move the needle on creating that affordable housing piece? And how PTC can really assist the city in getting that done?
Yeah. Another 15-minute question, but we'll go back to campaign, try to do it in one minute. The, the thing that, that the NV cap has shown to me, and I think other PTC members in spades, is that a lot of this housing is not going to get done with some, without some sort of public funding, possibly city funding. It is not going to happen. So the NV cap came back, and it's nowhere near the priorities that you set relative to housing, because it's so unaffordable. And then there's that old traditional, well, we got to put in 80% office to get 15% BMR, and we get all stuck in the old way of doing things. We have to be very proactive and very specific about investigating other sources of public financing, bonds, whatever, as well as partner financings with major corporations, potentially even, you know, family offices that want to be good citizens. Detail has to be limited for this forum, but we have to be proactive about that. We can't wait for tax credits, and we can't wait for, and we can't just default to lots of office so that the developer can afford to put in a little bit of housing. That doesn't move the needle for us on housing of any kind at all. And we need, by the way, not just, you know, the lowest level of affordable housing, but on up through missing metal, which the VTA addresses. And it's another really, I think, significant accomplishment of PTC since I've been on it.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Cormac.
Thank you, Mayor DuBois, and thank you, Councilmember Stone, for noticing. It's always hard to keep track of everything. Mr. Lowing, hello, it's nice to see you. Thank you for your many years of service on multiple commissions, which I appreciate. I'm asking my standard question, because I think it's really important how we do our work in addition to the policies, which you've already talked about. What are two words that colleagues would use to describe you and how you do your work? And I know you have a lot of work history and a lot of examples of working here in the city. What are two words that other people would use to describe how you do your work?
I think the two, on a spur of the moment, that I would come up with are strategic and collegial, the latter of which means, you know, working with others, listening to others, sometimes persuading them, sometimes being persuaded by them on the merits of an issue.
That was under a minute, well done. My next colleague can go. If I had another question, I'd ask you about the shuttle buses.
Councilmember Koo.
That's interesting. Thank you for being here tonight and reapplying, and for your service as well, Ed. I wanted to find out, oftentimes, a lot of people talk about housing and densification, adding more housing, but little is talk, is mentioned about transportation, especially traffic congestion or parking. How do you see those tied in? And, you know, what kind of programs that are meaningful? We have a few now, but what, what would you do to make them more meaningful to ensure that that big part of it is addressed so that it will allow people to feel comfortable with more housing?
Well, I think the linkage between transportation and housing is, is an intimate linkage and an always essential linkage. You just can't do land use with housing on it and not discuss transportation. So one project that I put in my application, so I know you read it, is the, the project on San Antonio where we, you know, I think of as having created land for new housing by opening up the CS zoning to be able to do that in an area where we're not going to be interfering with a lot of existing homes. So it gives us the developer a little bit more freedom. I was absolutely adamant in that, that we have to do, that the city has to do, not the developer, a transportation corridor study in San Antonio, because that's already jammed. And we can't just be pouring in more people to live there. I think it's 110 units, so it could be 200 people and not have transportation figured out. So that was a condition of approval for me to vote for it. Otherwise, I would have voted against it, sending it to you, and hopefully you would vote to do the quarter, quarter study anyway. So they're, they're, they're always linked, and of course, that also ties in with the sustainability that's simply existential for our city. It just, it just has to be linked. It's very complicated, as you well know. There's not, not a perfect solution. There's not going to potentially be, you know, 200 electric cars for the 100 people on day one, or no cars and only bikes, but it has to be part of the study to move forward on housing.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask a quick question. So in our application, we always ask if you've read the documents kind of related to the commission. I'm curious, have you read our zoning code? And if you have, what's your favorite section?
I, I gotta read it every week, Mayor. Based on, you know, the, the issues that we're talking about. This, this week, it's 1840 on retail preservation and things like that. So I don't have it on my nightstand, so I don't read it every night, but I bet I do read it every week as I get, as I get ready there. And, and some of the areas, actually, as Commissioner, sorry, as Director Lake said, Monday nights, some of these areas need a little bit of tweaking, a little bit of revision.
Yeah, I mean, I was kind of joking about your favorite section, but if, if there's a section you think is, needs work, or if there's anything you want to comment on, I'd be curious.
I don't, I don't think there's something that's particularly worse than others that I'd want to mention.
Yeah.
Happy to follow up on it, though.
Okay, great, thank you. So we do have, I guess, three minutes left. If anybody wants another question, or Ed, if you want to take a couple of minutes to wrap up. Any, any quick questions for anybody? Yeah, so Ed, if you wanted to summarize, that'd be good.
Sure, sure, well.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see Pat's in. Pat, do you have a quick question?
Yeah. Ed, thanks again for your, for your service and the thoughtfulness that you have on the commission. You talked briefly about the workforce housing or the missing metal. We actually had one of our very few workforce projects come forward this last Monday, which is really a county-led initiative that we're partners on, on the teacher housing at the, at the courthouse site. And it combined publicly-owned land, public funding from partnering with the city and the county, and then private philanthropic funding. And that's a great model. I want to hear your thoughts on, on how we could do more of it, because that's, that's hard, that one was a long time coming, and we need many more of these. So how could we scale this?
Yeah, that's exactly. I watched that session, I watched the, the whole council meeting, and at, at certain times, I was standing up and applauding, because it's actually happening, and it's just exactly what we need. And then I did the quick math in terms of the allocations, you know, of our, of our 10% divided by districts, and I think we get about 12 teachers taken care of in Palo Alto. So that's exactly the question I was asking myself. You know, I said, we need about 20 more of these, how can we scale? And of course, it starts from the bottom again, with where's the land and what's the partnership? But I think it's our obligation to, to, to do that, is to figure out ways to make it scale. And it starts with, I think, you know, land and financing. There certainly is the will in the, in the community to deal with, you know, those wanting to have teachers as residents here. So, and I think it also addresses all kinds of diversity issues as well. So the scale was exactly the word that was in my mind as I was watching the end of that.
It's, so we're at our 15 minutes. I'm getting a big echo, but if you want to wrap up super quick.
Yeah, just, no, just, just quite simply, I think, as, as you folks know, I, I love the city, and I love serving our citizens. So I'm up the learning curve on some very difficult city issues. So I just asked you to allow me to continue my very intense sort of workaholic efforts on the, these 30, 30 issues that we need to solve for our residents.
Great, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to PTC now.
Have fun. Okay, I think our next candidate is Marty Bernstein, if you want to bring him in.
Yes, thank you. All right, our next is the incumbent Martin Bernstein for the Historic Resources Board. I promoted you in the Zoom app. If you can please turn on your video and unmute, we'll begin the interview.
And start, and can you, can you hear me? There we are.
Yeah, we can see you as well. So Martin, you've done this a few times, I think you know the drill. We have 10 minutes. If you want to do an introduction or speak for about a minute or so, that'd be great.
Sure, and thank you. Yeah, it's, recently, someone asked me about an old building in Palo Alto, and they said, you know, this building's only 80 years old, what's, what's the big deal? I'm reminded, in Italy, in the Veneto region, in the northeastern Italy, in the Venice area, in the countryside, there is the Villa Rotagna, which is about a 600-year-old building right now. Probably the most famous house in the Venice region. That building used to be only 80 years old also. So it all goes back to what's the cultural value of historic preservation? And if the value was strong enough, then we, the city council can decide to enact regulations to help preserve these things if that becomes a cultural value. So that's my interest in historic preservation.
Great, thank you. Go ahead, Councilmember Phil Seth.
Hey, Martin, nice to see you, and thank you for, for all your service all these years and reapplying. So with that, in that context, I mean, maybe, maybe this is an oxymoron, but in your experience all these years from a historic resources perspective, has any, has things changed in Palo Alto over the years? I mean, should we be looking at this differently than we were 20 years ago? I mean, are, are there other things that, that we ought to be thinking about now? Or is it sort of pretty much consistent?
The biggest challenge I see, and I get these kinds of phone calls from people saying, how do I get off the historic list? So one of the comments, you know, if you look at property values, people are concerned about, gee, if I buy historic property, can I, can I remodel it? Can I change it? Can I get, get, add on to it? So I think the, the common theme I'm seeing today is perhaps from homeowners or home prospective buyers or real estate agencies emphasizing the fact of how much flexibility we do have with our current regulations. So I think the, the change, in answer to your question, it's how much education is the, as the Historic Resources Board or community services organizations or city councils promoting the benefits of historic designation? So education, I think, is, is probably what needs to grow.
So you see a lot more interest in, in, how can I say this? In unhist, in getting off the historic resources list today than maybe a few years ago? Or we just have a lot more historic properties now?
I think there are more historic properties now. And if you look on the parcel reports, which are free to any citizen of any property in Palo Alto, it says, there's a listing called Potentially Eligible. And so that can make some people fearful, says, yeah, better not, better not.
Sounds like a disincentive, yeah.
Yeah, where, where the ordinances are, are highly incentivized to keep it historic. And we can, I can discuss some of those at your, at your leisure.
Interesting, okay, thanks.
Councilmember Cormac.
Thank you, Mr. Bernstein, hello, good evening. My standard question, because it's not just what we do, it's how we do our work, is what are two words that colleagues would use to describe you? Could be in your professional life, your volunteer life, personal life. What are two words that people who've worked with you would use to describe you and how you do your work?
Highly responsive to their needs.
You can have another one. Highly responsive is, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to let you get off with the, the.
Responsive. Let's see, so this is my self-described job description. I seek beauty. So how do I then help translate people's goals and dreams into, into beauty?
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Burt.
Hi, Marty, and thanks again for your service for many years on this. And I appreciate that it's a board that maybe more than many of our other boards relies on a lot of institutional knowledge and, and that context that comes with experience. As we are seeing a gradual shift from historic buildings that were, you know, late 19th century and early 20th century into mid 20th century and mid-century modern starting to fall within historic categories, what are your thoughts on kind of that, the implications of that category of buildings? How, how, how noteworthy and worthwhile from an historic preservation standpoint are most of those buildings? And how would you distinguish what we ought to be focusing on from what we ought not?
Yeah, great, great question. So there are many buildings that fall into that category. There are buildings where they've lived their full life, and they're disintegrating enough where if they need to be rebuilt, well, now they're no longer historic. Okay. So the ones that are in pristine conditions, I'd say, would be a better, better candidate for preservation. Yeah. As, and then as time goes on, more and more houses every year become 100 years old. But age is not the only criteria for, for a good quality and worthwhile project. So what's the condition of them? And then, and then how pure are they to that design?
Okay, thank you.
I'll ask a question. So how long have you been on the Historic Resource Board? And I don't know if you know, in our new handbook, we're actually talking about term limits. I was curious what you think about that.
Yeah, so term limits is certainly is, you've heard the, the common phrase of getting fresh outlooks. Councilmember and Vice Mayor Burt just mentioned something actually very important for historic review. It's that administrative history. So we have projects that come before us that it's the same story about, hi, I think what we're doing is reasonable, but if the governmental standards that Palo Alto has adopted are not being met, it's important for the board to help explain that and, and at some level, educate the applicant of how, what they're proposing is not meeting the, the city's standards. So the return of term limits, if, if any member of, of any board with good administrative history is required not to participate anymore, then that may hurt the program and particularly historic preservation, because again, it's, it's based on history. And then what is, what are the, the national standards that Palo Alto uses? And there are a lot of nuances to that. So if there's a, if board members are in attendance where they may not have the history of, oh, that's familiar, you know, that'd be the challenge of term limits.
Yeah, how, how long have you been?
I have to, let's see, I, I have my applications here from the past. Let me see when the first one was. I don't have the exact date. I'm sure the staff would have. I'd have to look it up. I, I only have, you know, a few more, a few more minutes left. I'd have to look at my administrative records to find out how many terms have been on there.
Okay.
Yeah. So I, sorry, if you want me to spend some, I can take a look in all my records.
That's fine. If you want to wrap up, there's about a minute left. If you want to summarize, that would be good.
Okay, sure, thank, thank you for that. Again, main thing is education, and I think that could be a common role of, of all board members, whether in the, in the public or even speaking to individuals off, you know, if it's just a conversation. But just having the board serve as an educational vehicle for members of the public. There's, and, and just one example of how that might happen. Perhaps there is a joint meeting with HRB and city council and maybe other boards, planning commissions, for example, of what are the measures that HRB uses to make their, 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 their decisions on, on projects? So my bottom line, end of message is, let's help educate the members of the community on how important historic preservation is.
Great, thank you very much, and thanks for applying again.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Is City Clerk, if, I, I know we have a gap now, right? But if Michael McInen is there, we could, we could start, or we can take a break.
Yes, I do see Michael McInen in our attendees. Let me just ask him right now if he is available for an interview. Hi, Mr. McInen, are you, are you there? Hello, Mr. McInen, are you available to move your interview to right now? If that is all right?
Okay, well, he was scheduled for 6:35, so we can take a little break and we'll, but I would suggest everybody stay near your computer. We will, we'll try to start definitely on time, but if he shows up a few minutes early, it'd be good to get ahead if we can.
I see his hand raised. Mr. McInen, you're unmuted. Are you available to speak right now? It doesn't seem that anything is coming through. I'm sorry, Mayor, it seems like he's having some technical difficulties.
Okay, like I said, let's, let's take like a five-minute break. Everybody just come back in five minutes, and hopefully you can get that worked out with him.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are we able to get Mr. McInen in?
Yes, let me try promoting him and seeing if his mic will work then. So, Mr. McInen, I have promoted you. If you could unmute yourself and turn on your video as well.
Were you able to talk to him?
Yes, he was able to see and hear us, but he, we were unable to hear him unfortunately.
Okay. Wondering if maybe somebody can call him? Maybe, maybe you can dial in by phone if we can't get the camera working.
Yes, suggesting that right now. Mr. McInen, is there, I know you're able to hear us. Is there hopefully a way that you can dial in instead of utilizing the Zoom app? That might be helpful as well.
Danny, maybe we could move on to, is it Curtis Smoller next?
Yes, let's see. And I do see him in the attendees. Mr. McInen will provide you a different slot or exchange if that's all right.
I mean, if you can see if he can phone in, maybe we can just swap these two.
Yes, all right, that sounds good. So, Mr. Curtis Smoller, if you're available right now, I will be promoting you to panelists to start the HRB interview. If you can unmute and turn on your video. Great, thank you.
Great. Well, Curtis, I know you've applied before, so this is Historic Resource Board. It's a 10-minute interview. If you want to spend a minute doing an introduction, then great.
Sure, I'm, I think I've spoke, you know, I've gone through, gone through my history before. I'm a lawyer. I've been practicing for about 25 years. I practiced in real estate. I did, I did work with historic buildings, getting historic, getting buildings designated as historic buildings, working with situations where renovations had to be made in, in with historic buildings, with historic trees. I've done this, I've been doing that for 25 years. Prior to that, when I was young, I grew, I grew up in New York where I was studied art and architecture in New York and subsequently applied that to my college education, where I basically created my own major involving art and society. And I coupled that with a journalism degree to get an MS, sorry, BS from, from Syracuse Newhouse School that again focused on, focused on art and how it integrates with the environment and how you can basically track the, the spending patterns of different societies through, through art. And also kind of the, the different renaissance's of different areas, for example. Venice, if you look at Venice and the printing revolution, it's very similar to the Palo Alto and our tech revolution. And the, the two, if you looked at the two side by side, you would see the sort of the innovations in the architecture at the same times as the, in Venice and, and sure. So those, those are the kind of the things, this is my background, which I've never really talked about before. That's, that's just, again, from back east, but I've been practicing for over 25 years and worked in Sequoia, worked with master plans, worked with litigation and planning boards and you name it with real estate, I've probably done it.
Great, thank you. Let's go to the council. So raise your hand if you have a question. Thank you, Councilmember Cormac.
Mr. Smoller, good evening. Usually we just hear you. It's nice to be able to see you tonight. I wanted to ask you my usual question, which is what are two words that people who work with you would use to describe you? These could be colleagues from professional or community or volunteer, personal interactions. What are two words that people would use to describe you and how you do your work?
Problem solver. Basically, I'm used to dealing with, with highly complex situations and getting to the center of gravity quickly and figuring out what the problem is and how to fix it. The, basically, I've, I've done that my entire career where I have multiple parties involved in situations that are extremely high stress and complex, again, complex, I'm using the word again, but basically, I mean, a good example would be if you have an historic building and, and you want to preserve its nature, you can do several things. One thing you can do is renovate it. I heard someone previously saying if it's in bad condition, that's one criteria for keeping the building. There are other things you can do in that situation. One is to renovate the inside, keep the walls up and basically renovate the inside. There's a lot of different things you can do to basically keep the character of a, an area and preserve the nature of, of the area as well.
Thank you.
So I'll ask you a question on the, on the application, you know, it refers to several important documents. You said you have experience with these. Can you talk about how you've worked with the Secretary of Interior Standards?
I dealt when I was vacation with renovations of bill, of buildings in San Francisco. So basically, whenever we had, whenever I was representing a client, we had the fact that we had to, we had to basically comply with all of the criteria from the state. And that's, that's essentially how I came across it. I don't think I could recite it verbatim at this point. But I think I would, you know, I'm very familiar with it and in the past 20 years, I've, I've worked with it.
Great. Councilmember Stone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hi Curtis, nice to, nice to meet you. Yeah, I was really struck by your, your comment about, about kind of comparing the Renaissance and Venice architecture to sort of our own kind of technological Renaissance that we're, we're going through. And I'm a history teacher myself and I, I taught the Renaissance in the past. And I'm always struck by, I'm always struck by the, in particular, the architecture that came out of the Renaissance and what we can kind of, I always thought we could really learn from those architects and that time period and, and just other cultures around the world to really be able to, to kind of better plan our own, our own future. I mean, these are, these are timeless, these are, these are just, these are timeless techniques that have been proven to work over hundreds of years. How do you think, how do you think we can, we can kind of use the history to better inform our, our future? Just kind of growth and development and, and historic preservation?
Yeah, so I think that's, that's a great question and I totally agree with you. I think that what, what I, what I was, what I believe is that when you look at different, different societies and you look at when they enter sort of epics of their, of where they are, they tend to create what they consider great works, not only for the purpose of doing it, but also for the people that are there. That's why they're doing it. It's not just sort of, it's, it's art, but it's art for civic sake, not just for art for art's sake. And so I think that, you know, we have tremendous opportunities in this, in where we live. If you've ever gone to the, in Marin, if you've ever gone to the courthouse in Marin, that was designed by Frank Lloyd Wright. And it's amazing, right? And so you go in and it's a piece of art, but it also is a fully functioning courthouse. And you, you know, if you look at the, they have, it was like an airport where, with the courts and where you go. And it's very, it's very easy to sort of manage where you are, but meanwhile, there's open space, there's gardens. It's beautiful. And so I, I think, I think that the answer to your question is that we can create amazing works of art that are also civically minded and can be functional. And not just sort of like the form follows function Bauhaus kind of thing, but just also, you know, things that are nice and basically celebrate our achievements and our, and our society, because we live in a great place and why not celebrate it?
Thank you. And I had no idea that Wright designed a courthouse in Marin. I'm an attorney as well. I can't imagine practicing inside a courthouse that he designed. That's, that's interesting. I'm going to have to go check that out. So thank you.
I know, yeah.
So Councilmember Ku, if it's short.
I don't know if it's short, but hello Curtis, how are you? We'll try. I just wanted to find out, so we talk about historical buildings and architecture, but what if there was a significant event or significant person? Would that be, how would you factor that into a decision of whether it can be a historical district site property?
No, absolutely. I mean, you know, I, you know, I'm so embarrassed, but I forgot her name right now, but she's a second, but there's, there are always significant events that, that define our, you know, our society and, and our environment. And you also have very, you know, famous architects, for example, Frank Lloyd Wright, that's a great example. So for example, Frank Lloyd Wright does a building. It's a significant building. Why? Because it shows a certain type of, certain time that they were building, a certain sort of area of art, a certain, what's the word, school of art or school of architecture? And you're basically trying to look at that, how it's significant, not simply from the fact that it's old. The fact that something old, you know, may or may not make it significant, but it, it, but if it has certain people who designed them, then you have, you have added, you, there's added historical value there. You also have the question of, you know, in terms of the, the area, a great example for me is the Cardinal Hotel, Cardinal Hotel. Cardinal Hotel is a great example of like, so I think it's Art Deco interiors. And, you know, I think it's pre-war, it's like the twenties, I think. I'm guessing all this, but that's my recollection. And the renovation there is fantastic. And that's an example of, you know, a significant piece of, you know, architecture that's in our society that we use and that we should maintain. So I think that that's a really great, that's, that's, that's how, I think it's a multifaceted test. You have to look at it in terms of all, all of totality of the circumstances.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Curtis. That's our 10 minutes. It goes quick. I appreciate you applying. Thank you.
Much.
City Clerk, who's next?
So next at this moment would be Mike McInen. Unfortunately, he's still unable to dial in, currently working with him right now. Let me see if Caroline Willis is available right now. And I do see her in the attendees. See, I, Caroline, I have promoted you and if you can unmute yourself and turn on your video, we can start the, your interview.
But you can't see me.
I can hear you, yes.
Okay. Here, so I'm not sure how to show myself.
Okay, well, so thank you for being here early. And thank you for applying. So this is very quick. It's a 10-minute interview. If you want to spend about a minute giving us a little introduction and then council will start to ask you questions.
Oh, okay. See, I see my invitation is starting with video. There I am. And so I migrated from the East Coast in 1981. And prior to that, I had an older house in 1881 in DC. And four of us bought it when it was in a very sad state and renovated it. And it taught us a whole lot. We did everything. We did plumbing, electrical, rebuilt the windows, did, you know, all kinds of, you know, the, the drywall work, everything. So it was really an education and preservation and, and it's lovely. And then when I moved to Palo Alto, I started out in a Stedman, an old Palo Alto, very small one, lovely from the thirties. And from there, I moved to what was once the infirmary for Miss Harker School for Girls on Harker Street Avenue, Harker Avenue. And then finally to my house, which was built in 1909, which I love. It's wonderful. Not eligible according to Dames and Moore, because somebody did a lovely sixties addition off to his side, but I disagree with them. So I, many of you might know that I have been Chair of the HRB in the past. It was during the interim regs. It was a wild time. I like to think that I served with patience and grace, but there were many people who chose not to see it that way. But I, I think there was a lot of shading going on from their own, how they perceive things. I've also been president of Past Heritage. Um, I've also been President of Past Heritage. Um, I really enjoy, um, I was a student with PAST, I, I love that. Um, and I really enjoy sharing my love of historic buildings in our town with other people.
Great, thank you. Let's go to council. Does anybody have a question? Councilmember Phil Seth and then Councilmember Cormac.
Sure. Uh, Ms. Willis, thank you very much for joining us tonight. So, yeah, I actually wanted to ask you about that, uh, you were on the HRB in the nineties and so twenty-five years ago or something like that. What's changed from a historic resources perspective in that time? I mean, how should we, what have we learned since then that we ought to be thinking about?
Well, not enough. I can't believe, I mean, I literally can't believe we don't have any demolition protection in Professorville. Um, which I, I think is sinful. Um, but from my perspective. Um, historic preservation really hasn't moved forward. I think. In a way controversy really um, fed people's interest in preservation. Um, and when we lost major buildings or major buildings were threatened, people got involved. And I think recently people have just kind of. Not engaged with it. Um, it's not that they don't appreciate the buildings, they just. Um, aren't stepping up to say that, you know, we really need to protect them right now. Um, and, and then of course COVID is affecting everything, so. So there's no holiday house tour, no tours of Professorville or downtown, things that could get people really excited about. Um, our historic resources.
Yeah, COVID for sure, yeah.
Councilmember Cormac.
Thank you, Mary DeBois. Caroline, hello, it's nice to see you again. Now, now I'll go back to Ms. Willis. Um, so um, my standard question has to do with how we work with each other, not necessarily the content as much. So can you give me two words that people would use to describe you, people who have worked with you? Either in your professional or your personal or your volunteer life? What are two words that people would use to describe you and how you do your work?
I cheated. I heard your question. I called um, the woman who was um, followed me as President of PAST. And her choices were creative and original.
So that's not cheating, that's doing your homework. Creative and original?
Yes.
Excellent. Thanks so much.
Kind of real time homework, I guess. Uh, so. So when you were on uh, the Historic Resource Board before, was it required that you take a certain amount of training and? Are you familiar with the current standards?
You know, I don't think the standards have changed that much, um, but I, um, I would say I'm vaguely familiar with. The current standards or pretty much, I, I, I'm somewhat familiar.
Have to do so many hours of class, I think, a year or something.
Yeah, and, and I haven't, but um, but I was sort of kept in touch and, you know, I read Preservation Magazine and I. I follow along, so I don't feel totally um, behind.
Great, okay. Um, any other questions? Great, well, there's a few minutes left if you want to give a wrap up.
Okay, well, I do, so um. I'm, I'm gonna say, say that we are the fourth owners of our nineteen oh nine house, but um, I feel like. Many historic properties change ownership much more frequently than that. And I think our only hope is to. Me, have the information available to these owners before they come to the HRB. We need to really put the message out there that we want to preserve our historic buildings and we need to make it easy for them. We need to. Have the inventory available and I don't know if you got, I, I gotta, I'm hoping I did not, there's another version that I didn't find, but. When I went to this Historic Resources webpage and pressed the inventory. It literally looked like a Xerox of the old nineteen seventy-one inventory and PAST has a lovely version of it and I. I, I would, I think we need to up, update the webpage, I guess is what I'm saying. And not only have the inventory available, I think we need to. Um, make clear our relationship with the Dames and More Report. I think it was an informational report. I don't. I know it got adopted, but I don't really think it's um, as defined as we might be able to. Do. Um, I'd like to be a member of an HRB that honors older homes. I really. Um, think people should be acknowledged for taking care of them. It's a lot of work. Um, and I think I would opt to like the board to really um, work towards enhancing our historic districts. To somehow make them visibly different, so people feel that there's something special, sort of the moment they're there. Rather than, you know, sort of moving from one block to the next and there not being a real distinction. I think it would be nice if Professorville had some, a more vintage feel to it and its public. Elements and likewise for the Eichler neighborhood that's on the Historic Register, I'd like to see things more. And I think the Eichler because. It is more intact, it sort of has some of that already with a community center and its feeling. Um, I'd like to see the HRB collaborate more with PAST, um, but also Historic Society and Neighborhood Groups. To promote preservation. Um, I'd like to see us offer workshops online, perfect opportunity and I think that. A lot of times it's hard to find the information that you need on restoring old windows or redoing old plumbing. And I think that if we help people um, with resources that made it clear how to find that information, a lot of contractors wouldn't just go. Uh, too much trouble, you just wanna, you gotta get rid of it, you know, and I think a lot of our. Issues do come from contractors that just say, oh, it's gonna be really way too expensive to restore it. You wanted to start new. Um, but primarily, I just want to share my enthusiasm for the history of Palo Alto and history of our historic buildings.
Well, thank you very much for applying. Thank you. All right. Um, I, I heard from the clerk that uh, we have Mike McInen phoned in. Is he still here?
Yes, he's here. Um, he won't be able to join by video, but I will unmute him so that he's able to. Talk. Let's see. Mister McInen, I've asked you to mute yourself.
Can he unmute? Can we unmute him?
Yes, I'm, I'm unable to unmute him. I'm only able to ask him to unmute. Um, let me see.
Is it star six? I think that's what the clerk usually says.
Okay, can you hear me now?
We can hear you now. Glad you can make it.
Thank you.
So I don't know if. Yeah, no problem. So we have a 10 minutes. Um, if you want to give a, a one minute introduction, then council will ask you questions. Uh, thank, thank you for.
My name is Mike McKinnon. I've been on the HRB probably as long as Marty, maybe a little longer. I think I started uh, around nineteen ninety-eight. And uh, that was when I kind of moved uh, to Palo Alto from Cleveland. And I got uh, employed by NASA at Ames Research Center. And uh, I became the Historic Preservation Officer for uh, Moffett Field. And uh, all the historic district uh, that was part of Moffett Field, including the uh, derachable hangars. So I kind of got my uh, self uh, educated on historic preservation through that position. Being a federal historic preservation officer. And I thought it was, would be a good idea to uh, join in with the city of Palo Alto's historic preservation work. So I applied and got uh, selected uh, way back in nineteen ninety-eight. And I'm currently uh, resident of Palo Alto. I think my application says I'm, I'm not a resident, but I actually am. So that's kind of my background. Uh. Enjoyed being on the board for many years and I, I think I've brought some knowledge and value to it by. Working in uh, historic districts, working with the State Historic Preservation Office. Uh, working on agreements with the SHPO and uh, creating a character defining. Uh, manuals for a lot of the historic buildings uh, that were in, in the historic district. So I think I've uh, brought some added value to the process that we have at the city of Palo Alto.
Great, okay, thank you. Let's go to the council, the council members have some questions. Councilmember Cormac.
Mister McInen, hello, thanks so much for your service. Um, my question is about um, how you do, how you work with other people. So obviously you have lots of experience in this area. Um, what are two words that people who work with you would use to describe you? And how you do your work? And that can be people at NASA or people on the HRB or people in another um, capacity. What are two words that people would use to describe you and how you do your work?
I would say dependable and works well with other people.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember Stone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hi Michael, nice to meet you. Uh, thanks for your service and just your, I mean, very distinguished and impressive. Resume and backgrounds um, and experience in, in this area. I, I'm curious, you, you've served so many terms. Um, what do you? What is there new that you, that you really kind of hope to accomplish in this, in this next term? That, yeah, what do you want, what, what, what do you want to see accomplished in, in your next term?
Yeah, one of the things I would like to, to see is that to have the city of Palo Alto. Uh, address the historic character and the, the historic uh. Classification of the early semiconductor industry that occurred in Palo Alto. That has been somewhat overlooked and neglected as part of our historic inventory. And I, I would like to, to get some of those buildings that, the Fairchild Buildings and some of the early. Uh, histor- semiconductor industries uh. Nominated to uh, some of the historic uh, classifications we have.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, we just talked about a project next to that Fairchild Building on Monday. Uh, Councilmember Phil Seth.
I thought you were gonna go to the early vacuum tube industry in Palo Alto there for a second, but yes, I think that makes sense.
We can put the Varian Brothers.
Hey, um, so thank you for all these years doing this. So. What's your wisdom on what makes a good Historic Resources Board person? What's important?
Probably a lot of experience. I think.
Okay.
I think there's a lot of corporate uh, or historical knowledge that you gain by being on one of these boards for a long time. If you see a lot of these properties, there's a lot of similar characteristics that come up with it, so. It's a little bit of a steep learning curve if you're just getting into the business as far as knowing what a character defining feature is. And some of the attributes of historic properties.
Sort of institution, institutional knowledge in uh. And, and intangible.
Yeah, that, that, that would kind of be it, when I first came out here and I. Uh, took the job at uh, NASA Ames. Um, as Chief of the Facilities Planning Office, they said, oh, by the way, you're the Historic Preservation Officer. I said, well, what's that? And they said, you're gonna learn fast. So I took about fifty. Got steeped in historic preservation and uh, actually acquired a taste for it.
Great.
Yeah, I can see, okay.
So, Pat, we're pretty much out of time if, to give a short. Uh, if you want to do a quick wrap up, I know the 10 minutes goes by quick, but uh, we're ready to 10 minutes.
My wrap up would be uh, I've been not only involved as the Historic Preservation Person, but I've actually had hands-on experience. I've uh, owned a Frank Lloyd Wright House back in the Midwest, which we uh, restored. I live in a Gustav LaMeister House here in Palo Alto, which I've restored, so. I have not only knowledge, uh, textbook knowledge, but actual hands-on experience in working in the restoration of historic properties.
Great, okay, well, thank you very much and I'm glad we could finally uh, get you connected in tonight. Okay, and um, City Clerk, I think we're going to our last HRB.
Yes, so Margaret Wimmer is our next interviewee. I will promote you as panelist if you can unmute yourself and turn on your video. We will begin the interview.
Hi, good to see you. Thank you for applying again. Um, so you've done this before as well. Uh, if you want to give a quick introduction, then we'll go to council for questions.
Sure, my name is Margaret Wimmer and I've served on the board now for about eight years, I believe, about two terms. I'm a graduate from the Arizona State University College of Architecture and Environmental Design and I have a Bachelor of Science in Design. Um, while I was in school in Arizona, I had an internship at Taliesin West in Scottsdale. Which is also the Frank Lloyd Wright Foundation and um, I worked as a draftsman for, I think, about a year. On some of their architectural projects. So that was sort of the first time I ever really worked on. His, in a historic environment, on historic projects and I really gained an interest in historic design. I also was a volunteer docent at Taliesin and gave um, visitor tours on the weekends. And then after college, I moved to the Bay Area and lived in San Francisco. And then in nineteen ninety-two, I started working in Palo Alto. Doing residential projects and have pretty much based my business in Palo Alto since then. Um, I've always had, like I said, an interest in historic architecture and design and I've worked on many. Historic projects in old Palo Alto and Professorville. So I've presented to the board on some of my own projects. Um, which I've always feel like I can understand their vantage point and where um, their point of view as an applicant. Um, and so um, I'm still working as a residential designer. Um, and I continue my education through the California Preservation Foundation that. I think most of the board members are affiliated with. I'm also um. Involved with the Institute of Classical Architecture and Art, which is a, a nonprofit organization that's based in. New York and they have a Northern California chapter, but they just focus on uh, education. Of classical architecture, which I'm really getting a lot, I'm really getting a lot out of being a part of that program.
Great, thank you. Um, let's go to council. Does anybody have a question? Councilmember Phil Seth.
Hi Ms. Wimmer, thank you very much for uh, for reapplying and thank you for, for your service on this, on this board. And so, let me ask. Uh, in, in the eight years you've been on the, the HRB in Palo Alto, what's something really surprising that you learned in that time? That, that we ought to know.
That uh, it said, government is like a very slow-moving process.
That was a surprise, huh?
I mean, like, we would come up with all these great ideas and make suggestions and then, I don't know. Things just never really move forward. I know that we, we've been working a lot on the Mills Act, for instance, trying to reinstate that. Um, we've been trying to come up with some better incentive programs to incentivize people who own historic properties. To preserve them. So I feel like if we could come up with some great incentives, like. Maybe not charging them uh, the fees to go through the initial planning, historic planning process. I mean, I think there's a lot of things that we can consider doing. I, I think we've, we've had a lot of workshops. Where we've thrown out some of these ideas, but um, the ideas just never really get much further than that.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Cormac.
Hi Ms. Wimmer, good evening. Um, my question is more about how we do our work. Um, and so probably no surprise, you've probably heard it already. Um, what are two words that people who were, have worked with you would use to describe you? This can be colleagues in your, um, in your residential design or HRB colleagues or other parts of your life. What are two words that people would use to describe you and how you do your work?
Well, I, I guess I. Well, I, I guess I would say hardworking for one. And I mean, I'm obviously creative because I have a degree in creative design, but hardworking and, I guess, resourcefulness, you know, there's not, there's not always one, one solution. I think, I think there's multiple solutions, and I think there's always interesting ways to look at things and solve a problem.
Okay, thank you so much. Even, even if I had a degree in creativity, I don't, I don't think I'd be a creative person. So I'm glad you, I'm glad you are.
Yeah, Vice Mayor Bird.
Yes, hi. As we continue to have more and more people who come into our community to, to live here and, and value our community from throughout the country and throughout the world. Do you see it as a challenge to continue to instill and have the community value historic preservation? And if so, what should we be doing to to further that aim?
I think public education for one may make them aware that Palo Alto is a very historic place. And we should place value on that historicism because we call it our historic fabric. And we are always feeling like we are trying to retain the historic fabric of Palo Alto, because Palo Alto wouldn't be what it is if it felt all new and, and it was all a new development. It just, it, it would lose its historic sense. And so I, I think that the fact that we made Professoreville into a historic district is part of our efforts to preserve our historic fabric. But I, you know, I think a lot of people who own these houses, a lot of people who are, for instance, looking at purchasing a historic home in Palo Alto, there's, it always feels like they are, it's a burden, you know, like, oh, I want to buy this historic house in Professoreville, but, oh, it's historic, you know, oh, my gosh, I can't do anything, you know? Instead of having that as their initial reaction, we should celebrate that. I mean, we should make owning a historic house rewarding and celebrate it and make it seem like it's, it's an honor, you know? I, I think it's, it's how we present the information and how we, and incentives. Again, it's, I think it has to do with incentives.
Great, we have about three minutes left. So councilmember Stone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hi, Margaret. Nice to meet you. Thanks for your service. So you bet you've served on the HRB for about eight years now. What's one regret or frustration that you've had not being able to maybe get something done on the commission? And, and maybe how do you, how do you plan to, to be able to see it through in another term?
Um, I think that what my, my reaction to that is I feel like that we as a board should spend more time together just as a board. I mean, I feel like all the times we get together, it's at, at a meeting where we're reviewing projects, where we don't get to spend time as a collective group of people to strengthen our, our committee as a whole. I mean, we're all individual people with individual talents, but we come together as this committee, and I, I know we've had like, we get like one retreat every year, which is great. It's like bonding and we get to kind of know each other and kind of, we learn more about what the principles are. I think it's the new people that, because I was new. I, I think I took over someone else's term. And it was just like, you just learn, you just jump in the fire and there's not a lot of training, there's not a lot of background, and you just learn by participating on the board, which is the best way of learning. That's Frank Lloyd Wright was always learn by doing. But I think, I feel like we would benefit as a board with a little bit more togetherness outside of the, outside of the hearings, outside of the board, board hearings. I don't know if that's, I don't know if that answers your question.
It's, it's a great answer, and I agree. I mean, I think we could all benefit from that. Good idea. Thank you.
Sorry, there's about 30 seconds if you want to wrap up.
Any more, are there any more questions?
I think we're pretty much out of time.
Well, um, well, thanks for the opportunity. I, I really get a lot out of being a part of the board. I know that it's, sometimes it's a lot of work, and sometimes I feel like I, I wish I could devote more time to it. Because I just, I feel very fulfilled by being a part of it. And that's probably a part of my being a sole proprietor, proprietor. I, I don't work for a firm. I work at home by myself, which is great, but it's nice to have a community of people who have similar interests and I've, I've just really appreciated being, being a part of it.
Well, great. Well, thank you for applying again.
Yeah. Have a good evening, everyone. Thank you.
Okay, so I think that was the last HRB applicant. So now we're going to shift to 15-minute interviews.
Yes, so our next applicant is Bobby Adel for the Planning and Transportation Commission. Mr. Adel, I promoted you as panelist. If you can unmute yourself as well as turn on your video, we will begin your interview. Mr. Adel, you have been promoted. Are you able to unmute and turn on your video?
I have unmuted apologies. I'm trying to figure out why I'm not, my camera's not starting. Okay, stupid technology.
So these, these interviews go very fast. It's a 15-minute interview. I'll give you a minute or two to introduce yourself, and then councilmembers will ask you questions. So do you want to go ahead and give us a initial introduction?
Great, absolutely. Hi, everybody. My name is Bobby Adel. I am a fourth-generation Palo Alto resident. Maybe even the fifth, actually, I believe. I've been around the block a little bit. I grew up in Palo Alto. I went to Gunn High School. I was class of 86. Immediately left Palo Alto after graduating high school and didn't come back until 10 years ago. So the city has definitely changed quite a bit since I came back. I am a restaurant person by trade. I am, used to be the general manager of Manresa Restaurant, Three Michelin Star Place in Mosquitos. I'm a failed actor, if you will, and I moved back to Palo Alto because I wanted to find myself. And so I found that my home was available and I was able to come back here. I moved to Green Meadow and recently moved to Charleston where we do have an overlay and I'm part of the historical committee here, the ACC, where we try and keep everybody happy, if you will, with all the planning and designs that come up in these neighborhoods.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you for applying. Yeah, let's go to council. Some questions. Vice Mayor Bird.
Hi, Bobby. Nice to meet you. If we haven't met before, I don't recall. So I saw in your application that you had spoken about both being a bicyclist and being concerned over the Ross Road and Charleston plans having been divisive. Can you talk a little bit about how you think we might be able to have better processes and better outcomes on bike initiatives in the community?
It is a very decisive issue, isn't it? Yeah, I, I do follow that one along, and I've been a lifelong bicyclist. You know, one of the things that I've found is people want to be heard. Not everybody wants their way to be pushed forward, and certainly the loudest and the squeakiest wheels get to do that, but you know, one of the things is the roundabouts and all the, the, all the other stuff that have been built on there. No one really understands why they're done. And I think a better part of helping with that is the communication. You know, in, in my experience and no, no shade for anybody, is that nobody really understood why it was happening. It was sometimes their own fault. A lot of people didn't realize that there are communications and there's stuff that goes out there, but you know, for me, I would try and help with the outreach of the communication instead of waiting for people to come and find out about it.
Thanks. Councilmember Stone and Councilmember Corvett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hi, Bobby. Nice to meet you. I, I was interested, you, you mentioned you, you took a long break from Palo Alto. You came back. A lot of changes happened in that time. Can you say one thing, one change that you perceive to be a positive change on the community and one change that is a negative?
You know, the interesting thing for me was, you know, growing up here, I sort of felt like the, the city was pockets, lots of small pockets. You know, you had Professoreville, and I had my friends who went to Pally, and I had my friends. I was a children's theater kid. So we had our sections over there and, you know, I had my job at Palo Alto Rec. But, you know, nobody really seemed to interact very much. One of the things that I've really been excited about sticking back was maybe it's technology, maybe it's just next door, right? There's a lot more community and there's a lot more conversations about people, whether it's arguing and complaining about how much they hate El Camino or how much they hate this and that. People definitely seem to be talking a lot more than they did before I left.
Thank you. My next question was going to ask you to juggle for us, but I see that's not your, not your strength in the application.
Councilmember Corvett.
Mr. Adel, hello. My question has more to do with how you do your work than the content of it. So what are two words that people who have worked with you would use to describe you? And it could be people at Bon Appetit or Manresa or any, any of your other experiences to describe you and how you do your work? What are two words that other people would use?
One word, mentor. That's always been my thing, and I was taught early on in the restaurant business that it didn't matter, the yelling, screaming, you know, I'm doing it all on, on my own doesn't work when you're a band of misfit pirates trying to get something going on. And so I had very good mentorship when I was younger and sort of coming up in the business. And one of the things I do right now is I don't concern myself with promotions at work. I don't concern myself with anything else. My joy comes from getting my team recognized and helping them grow.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for applying and coming back to Palo Alto, Bobby.
Thank you.
So it's very exciting to see, you know, that you have experience in logistics and transportation, and a lot of what is in your application makes, I, I can see that you have heard of a lot of people's experience. And, you know, Palo Alto, a lot of Palo Altons talk about building housing and so forth. Obviously, that brings in other impacts. And can you tell us a little bit about your logistics and transportation background that you mentioned in your application?
Absolutely. So for what I do now is I work at a certain tech company, and we have 72 locations that feed people and 280 locations that also we stock for food for those places. So so this tech company is pretty large, and there's 55,000 people that we deal with. So we do 75,000 meals a day in general. I'm not at the tippy top of that corporate ladder, obviously. I don't feed everybody, but one of the things that we do is, over the last six years, we've tried to consolidate all of those locations and have a central production area that sends everything out. So that was one of the reasons why I took the job that I have now. My responsibility wasn't just coming in and feeding people, but trying to figure out how with five times growth, which is expected for this company in the next five years, how are we going to replicate everything and scale up? So in the last two years, we've opened up a central production kitchen. We've opened up a warehouse so that everything comes through one central node and goes out to those instead of everybody just having a free-for-all and doing whatever they want to and ordering what they wanted to and getting the blank check, which stopped happening several years ago from the company.
And the transportation part, is that a?
The transportation of that. Absolutely, because we do have warehouses, the warehouse, we do have trucks that need to go. So some people don't understand how large the, the company is, but you know, it's from San Antonio all the way to the other side of Sunnyvale with growth happening in San Jose now. So it's, it's, when you look at the company's real estate holdings, it's a pretty large-scale thing, especially with all the micro kitchens that we stock. You know, that's just shy of 300 separate locations that are each stocked like a 7-Eleven.
Sounds like a major search company we all know.
It's possible.
Thank you.
So, so part of the role of the Planning and Transportation Commission is really to interpret our ordinances and our zoning code. You know, how familiar would you say you are with our zoning code?
You know, it's interesting because since I moved into this overlay that we're in and dealt with the architectural committee, I've learned a lot more than I knew before. I'm starting, and I've been very interested in it. So other than just sort of wandering around the neighborhood and taking pictures of people's fences and the slope of their roof, as my mother says, I've turned into that guy. You know, I'm also looking at El Camino and what buildings are being built there, and you know, compadres got torn down and what's going to go up there. And so my curiosity started to get the better of me, and so I started to look and see what could be built there, and what are we doing, and how are we, how are we dealing with the, the air rights? You know, I, I started to really get interested in that because my brother in New York, the people who live next door to him, you know, they decided to claim the air rights over his building, and I couldn't believe they got away with it, but they did because they put up some PVC pipes and left it there for two years. The next thing you know, that property is granted to them. So I'm not, I'm not where I would love to be, but my, but my curiosity definitely is piqued with that stuff.
Okay, we're running short of time, but councilmember Filso, do you have a quick one?
Yeah, really briefly. Thank you for applying for this and being interested in volunteering like this. So thank you. Just, how'd you, how'd you happen to, to focus on the Planning and Transportation Commission as opposed to, for example, the architect, I mean, the Parks and Rec Commission or the, you know, the Utilities Advisory Commission or one of the other ones?
Honestly, because of the work that I've been doing with the Architectural Committee here in our neighborhood, it piqued my interest, and I don't think I would have. I don't think it's the sexiest position. I don't think it's, you know, nobody goes there and goes, oh, I'm going to change the world and dominate everything by doing this, but I feel like it's something that I can actually make a difference. You know, it, it's something that probably not enough focuses on how important it is, and, you know, it's a long-term strategy. It's, it's never, hey, we're going to do this, and then in six months, it's all done. You know, and we got to think five, 10 years down the line, and so that's why I wanted to be able to jump in here. I, I think I can make that kind of difference because that's sort of how my brain works, five years, 10 years down the road now.
Which is certainly consistent with land use. What, a difference in what sense?
Well, there's a lot of changes that are happening in Palo Alto. You know, the, there's AD, you know, the, the mother-in-law clauses, there's housing that needs to be an issue. We've sort of reached this capacity where we need to figure out how we're going to house people and how we're going to, how we're going to go forward. My difference that I want to be able to make is to help that. I, I often think that I bring a lot to the table, and I'm pretty smart with creative, creative solutions, and that's how I think I can do that.
All right, thanks very much.
So, and I try to repeat this for all the candidates, but if others are listening, we have a lot of good applicants, and so if you don't make it this time around, please don't get discouraged. So we have, we have about a minute left. If you want to give a little wrap-up summation.
No, my wrap-ups, you know, I, just to expand on what I was saying before, I, I really feel like I can help and be a difference maker in this. This area is something that's pretty darned important. You know, if we don't start thinking 10 years, not start thinking, because that implies we haven't, so I apologize for that. But, you know, we need to spread the word that it's not a, hey, we've made a decision and housing has been solved and zoning has been solved, and it's all taken care of. And I think that with my communication skills and with my creativity, I can help at least get that process a little more expanded out. And also I want that bicycle lane to be perfect.
Great. Okay, well, thank you very much for your application.
Thank you guys very much. I really appreciate it.
Right? Okay, City Clerk, if you want to pull in, it's like Doug Burns.
Yes, um, so the next applicant is Doug Burns. We do see two names of Doug in the attendees. Um, Mr. Burns, if you could raise your hand, I'll be able to locate the correct name and promote you as panelist.
Let's just talk to both of them.
Okay, thank you so much. And you have been promoted. If you can unmute yourself and turn on your video, we will begin the interview.
Hello.
Hi. So I don't know if you have a camera.
You can't see me?
We can hear you, but we can't see you yet.
Oh, okay. Fortunately, if I'm not hopefully looking like a cat.
Uh, there you are. And you're not a cat. So I don't know if you've been listening, these are fifteen-minute interviews, give you a chance at the beginning to just kind of introduce yourself and why you're interested. And then council members start firing questions at me. So if you want to give us a good little introduction, that'd be great.
Okay, so, um, I actually was born in the Palo Alto Hospital or the Stanford Hospital and, um, have lived here all my life except for a university time. Um, you know, went to Palo Alto schools, except for university and then, um. You just, um, and I spent a lot of time riding my bike and walking around our great city. Um. So, uh, um, I am a member of the BPA, the Brown Park Association and PAN, where I met a couple of you and, um. Also, like this, like on Sunday, somebody in the neighborhood organized a thing to go clean up, um, our bike paths. So I spent. A couple of hours this Sunday cleaning up mud on the bike path, um, which was, got a lot of people thanking us and there was a lot of people out there. Um. And then, um, you know, I was, and as I'm riding around and stuff like that, I noticed a lot of the things that are happening in the city in terms of the. Buildings and some of the small touches, I certainly appreciate like, you know, there's a bike path that goes out to Hanover and they just took the fence down between what was an old Lockheed building and the. The path and it just looks so much better.
Great. Okay, let's go to council. Uh, council members have questions. And I'll go ahead and start once I've been asking people. So one of the last questions on here. Was how familiar are you with some of our city documents? And. I'm curious if you are familiar at all with our zoning code and what your favorite section is.
Um, well, I don't, um, have a totally favorite section, but I certainly go into the PAN meetings, um, there are some people on the group that are very good at it and, um, have. Definitely, um, I've learned a lot about, you know, um. Let's say like the building that's where the old Mike Spikes was going up and what that zone for and, you know, what's, um, what's planned for there and in. Kind of the zoning aspects of that. So they, those kinds of things are discussed quite a bit at PAN meetings.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Corvett.
I think the vice mayor was next.
That's all right, go ahead.
I'll jump in. Okay, so my question, Mr. Burns, hello, um, has more to do with how we do our work than the content. So, um, what are two words that people you've worked with? Um, it can be in your professional life or your personal or volunteer life would use to describe you and how you do your work. Two words that other people would use.
I think one is, I'm a, I mean, it sounds so, but, um, but I'm a very good listener and I do like to learn new things and and listen and. Um, I think it's a good to listen to a lot of different viewpoints. I know that that sounds, um, like too perfect, but I actually really do believe that.
Great. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Burr.
Hi Doug.
Hello.
So out of our, our biggest issues, uh, what do you see as our, our biggest challenges and at? Um, at a high level, how do you think we should go about solving them?
So you know, I I definitely think that there's definitely a need for housing in Palo Alto and and that is definitely a huge issue and it's going to be, um, really interesting to me if anybody. Wants to ever build an office building in Palo Alto again, just because of the way the world has kind of changed and there's certainly a lot of buildings going up. So. Um, I think that's going to be very interesting coming up in the future as to, um. If anybody, I, as you say, what's going to happen with all those buildings that they're building that if they're going to, someone's going to rent them and what, um, is going to happen? If in the future in terms of people using offices and and wanting that, but certainly a huge need for housing. Um, you know, like, uh, right by my, where I live, there's a, um. Is that I forgot it's section eight or section nine housing going up? And I think that's just great.
Thanks.
Yeah, Councilmember Phil.
Yeah, yeah, thanks. Uh, thanks, thanks, thanks for joining us and and applying. How, how, how'd you, how did you happen to sort of gravitate to the planning and transportation commission as opposed to the other, one of the other ones such as Parks and Rec or the Utilities Commission or one of those?
Um, you know, um, I will, I mean, I do, I love, um, transportation and, um, the bike path system here and everything. And. I think the grade separation is a fascinating problem for the city, um, and things like that. So I really appreciate that. Um, and as they say, I think, um, for Baron Park, the, the bike path that, um, that was the old railroad is, um. The crown jewel of of our neighborhood, well, with ballpark. Um, and, uh. I, so I think those things are very important. And in terms of buildings and things like that, as I said, you know, um, like the old, on Hillview that all depicts building and stuff like that, I think that's. That that building was empty for like two or three years and the fact that they tore it down and they built a nice new building is is good for the neighborhood.
Thanks.
We hear from, uh, some of you, we haven't heard from too much today. Any, any questions? Yes, Councilmember.
Hi Doug, how are you?
Good.
Very good. Um, nice to see you and thank you for applying. Um, um, you know, you talked about building housing and that's something that we all, that the city needs and many other cities as well. Oftentimes that comes with, uh, traffic matters as well as parking issues. How would you go about resolving that?
You know, I I do, I think, well, um, you know, access to public transportation and good biking is is important if you were going to reduce parking and things like that. And but I do think that is. A problem when, you know, when I go places and I can't park, I find it, um. Kind of annoying, but I also think by the city encouraging more, um. Biking and and things like that, that would really help. And, um, hopefully, you know, with the Caltrain getting electrified and things like that, public transportation will be improved.
Okay.
Okay, well, uh, thank you again for applying. If you want to, um, just kind of. Do a final one or two minute kind of summary of why you're interested in planning and transportation. That would be good.
Okay, so again, um, you know, I've lived here all my life and and I love my city and, um, really want to see, be part, you know, give back to the community now that I am. Retired from, um, working in Palo Alto, uh, most of my career, um, looking forward to, uh, doing things. And as I say, you know, being part of, um. The Brown Park Association and PAN and and those sorts of things. I've, I've really enjoyed that and, um. Actually saw Lydia one day when I was out kind of trying to clean up Cypress Lane, which is a whole huge issue for our neighborhood in terms of, uh. Who exactly owns that and and, um, what's happening with it. Um. So things like that, um. Uh, you know, I definitely want to be involved and and help my community get even better.
Great, thank you. And and like, like I said earlier tonight, we have, we have a lot of great applicate applicants for just a few slots. So. If you don't make it this time, please, please apply again in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. I really, um, appreciate all you do for the city.
Right, good night.
Bye-bye.
So I think we next to be have Rebecca Eisenberg and then we're going to take a ten-minute break after that.
Yes, uh, Ms. Eisenberg is the next interviewee. Um, Ms. Eisenberg, I've promoted you as panelist. If you are able to unmute yourself and turn on your video, we can commence to interview. Ms. Eisenberg, um, I've promoted you as panelist. If you can unmute yourself and turn on your video as well.
Hi, um, hang on, can you see me? I.
Right, yeah.
Hi. Wait, you can't see me. One second, I'm sorry.
Great.
Oh, sorry, sorry to turn this off. It's just on and I'm here in all of my unadorned glory because I came straight from the, um, planning commission meeting. Wait, let me grab one thing. Okay.
Okay, so you've, you've done this before. It's a fifteen-minute interview. We'll give you a minute or two and then council members will start asking questions.
Okay. Tell me when you.
Go.
Okay, here I am. So, oh, actually, I want to do one quick thing. I want to move this to here and then that to there. Sorry for this. Um, so I can be looking more at you. All right. So hi, I am Rebecca Eisenberg. I've been here before and, um. I think that, um, it's easy to get an impression that you all know me. But to be honest, even though I have reached out to every single one of you, uh, maybe not yet Greer, but I'd love to actually reach out to you about this and. To ask if we can speak in person, speak over the phone, only one of you has taken me up on that. And that actually was Greg Tanaka. So you can talk to Greg about what I'm actually like when I speak face to face. And whether I am, um, belligerent or hostile or those other things that just putting it out there that maybe. Some people have said about me because. Um, it's not true. And I think you'll see that if you ever do take the opportunity to pick up the phone and talk to me. And I would expect the same of all of you, that you would also be equally. You know, normal on the phone. It's extremely difficult to. When, when someone is very knowledgeable about an issue, has a lot of experience and especially a lot of passion, it's extremely difficult. To get to be known when your communications are limited to two-minute micro speeches without any back and forth. Um, you know, I know this is only fifteen minutes and really hardly any better. But, uh, my last time I interviewed here, I really used it, the time to expose a conflict of interest that was really bothering me. On, um, the planning commission, I still think there are conflicts of interest this time, but I put it in my application. And so, um, unless you want to talk about it, I feel that I really covered it there. Um, you can ask me about how, you know, and in recent email I sent you, I talked about how those conflicts may. Impact the decision that the planning commission is making tonight, but I'd love to answer other questions too, because I think that maybe has been asked and answered, although I'm passionate about it. So Rebecca Eisenberg, lawyer for thirty years, mom of two teenagers. I Palo Alto resident two times, once in the eighties when I attended Stanford, then moved back, you know, twenty years later, you know, with my kids in order to attend the public schools. Where I know Greer works and, um, yay, hope to get back to school soon. Um, and, uh. I'm here because I'm passionate about planning, I'm passionate about transportation. I think that that committee more than any commission, more than any others. Makes decisions that have immediate and direct and huge impacts on day-to-day life for every single person who lives here and every single small business and every single employer. And I think that I can contribute an important perspective to that.
Great, okay, thank you. Um, do we have any questions from council? Uh, Councilmember Corvett.
Thank you, Mayor DuBois. Good evening, Ms. Eisenberg. Um, I think for the record, you and I have had, uh, at least two conversations privately, so it's nice to talk to you again. Um, so my question really has to do with how you do your work. Um, same question I ask everybody. What are two words that other people who colleagues would use to describe you and how you do your work? Um, it can be from your law experience, it could be from your, um, volunteer experience. What are two words that other people would use to describe you?
Okay, well, Allison, thank you for reminding me of that one phone call we had last April, right after I had announced that I was going to run for city council. Where I heard you basically tell me that I shouldn't, but, um, and that's okay. Um, but, uh, I, I don't remember any other phone call and, um.
I called you actually after, um, after you interviewed last time. I called and and suggested we talked a little bit about. It's fine, go ahead.
I totally believe you. I, I.
No worries.
No worries. So maybe I was me at that time. I think I was a little bit traumatized, but I don't think I'll be traumatized tonight. Um, nor am I any, in any way traumatized by that earlier conversation. And if there's anything about me, I do not hold grudges, even if I were. I couldn't, if you asked me to, which I, you wouldn't, um, because it's crazy. So two words that people use to describe me. Um, they describe me as high integrity, in other words, honest, you know, and thoughtful that I do my homework. Um, as a part of high integrity, I am willing and able to change my mind. I admit I'm wrong, like I just did. Without and reminding me of our phone conversations, I admit I'm wrong, when I'm wrong, I forgot that phone call, you know, both of them. Although I remembered one of them. And and to me, admitting you're wrong is an extremely important part of leadership. Um, another thing I do that is that I have confidence to do, oh, that's the other, other. Word that they used to describe me is brave, courageous, I've courage. The other thing I have courage to do is I've courage to change my mind. Um, like yesterday, I was asked by one group to go and, um, oppose, I know, actually go and support. A, a new proposed development in college terrace by an organization that I. Almost always see eye to eye with, um, but I got there late for what they wanted me to do for the protest and. I ended up talking to the residents who were there in support of the, in in opposition of this development that I was there supposedly to oppose. And in speaking to those, I'll tell you what, what development it was. It's the, um. The, uh, twenty-four units proposed, um, housing development in college terrace right by the library. And the little street that's between the library and the park there. Um, I was asked to support it because it's housing, but I talked and I usually support housing. But then I talked to neighbors and they oppose it because twenty-four, three hundred fifty square foot units. Aren't the best solution to housing in that location. And I agree with them. I totally agree with them. And not only did I change my initial mind on this development, but I also proposed a compromise. Um, when we looked at the land and there were two tiny little houses and then one empty lot. I said to the neighbors, well, would you be willing to consider something like four or six townhouses? Big enough to accommodate families rather than twenty-four micro units that would really only accommodate like. Google workers or Tesla workers and, you know, who can put a family in three hundred fifty square feet. Um, and and the neighbors all said, yeah, I mean, if the project were something like, you know, four or six, you know, townhouses. Big enough to serve families, yeah, we'd be fine with that. So. That is, I think, how I have courage. I have courage to change my perspective on something. I have courage to talk to a person who. Maybe would be seen as the other side, you know, I have courage to, you know. Continue to ask them more about it, even though it may, um, you know, and and people from that organization may be watching this. And I got to say, I love you guys. But I really think that family-sized housing is a better fit for, for that location and that we really need family-sized housing. Um, and yeah, let's just have townhouses instead of micro units. Sounds great, right? So anyway, that's, I think those two points are are big about me, integrity and courage.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Phil.
Hi Rebecca, thanks for, thanks for joining us tonight in a plane. Um, you've been a. You, you've been a, a keen observer, a close observer of the PTC for a while now. What do you, how, how do you think we can get better use out of the planning and transportation commission? What we should, what should we be doing differently relative to that commission?
Well, I'm really glad you asked that question. And in addition to my strong. Questions I have about potential conflict of interest, um, that I put in my application where I think that that's too commercial developer leaning right now. You know, um, and I don't think that anyway, I don't think that someone should be chosen because of their already existing opinion. You should select, you know, an applicant because of their interest in actually reviewing every application, you know, on its own basis. But anyway. I have something new to tell you after watching the beginning of the meeting that I was watching before coming here to speak with you today. And that is when, um, one of the commissioners, um, Ed asked, um, sorry, Commissioner Lawing, and sorry that I'm very first name, first name basis here, please call me Rebecca. You know, you can even call me Becky, I won't be insulted. Anyway, so when Commissioner Lawing asked the applicant, which is the owner of Town and. Town, no, actually he asked the staff member who is Rachel Tanner, um. You know, what she viewed her job was in evaluating the owner of Town and Country's application. I'm very grateful for him asking that question. Rachel Tanner, who works for the city and is high up at Jonathan Lake's office, gave the answer, it is her job to process applications. Rachel Tanner, who works with the city and is high up at Jonathan Lake's office, gave the answer, it is her job to process applications. I do not think that it is the job of the city's planning department to process applications. It is the job to evaluate applications and deny the ones that need to be denied. It is, they are not just a rubber stamper. And she went on to say that every application has, every applicant has the right to take advantage of the tools at its disposal. In this case, the owner of Town and Country wants to convert a quarter of the retail space to medical offices, just because, you know, during permanently. Even though the reason that these small businesses have left is because the owner landlord had refused to lower rents. Guys, supply and demand, lower demand means you gotta lower prices. It doesn't mean that you change the law to allow you to keep your same prices or raise them. The applicant said something like, we've tried everything to, to keep, you know, retail here. But the applicant didn't try lowering rents. So they did not try everything. In fact, they tried nothing. But the city actually supported the applicant's right to convert a quarter of Town and Country from retail permanently during this pandemic. Even though the 40,000 people who work or attend Stanford University are gonna go back sometime soon. And the 2,000 kids and 500 teachers and staff who attend Pally. Pally are going back and the district office that obviously has several hundred employees next door are coming back. And residents will soon, when the vaccination is out, will soon be able to leave their homes. This is no time to put in place a permanent change to the municipal code to change forever the face of Town and Country because the landlord doesn't want to lower rents. But the planning office supported this. The planning office recommended this. So given the context of a planning office who potentially views its job as processing the applications. How can the commission be expected to reach, without me on it in particular, be expected to reach the right outcome? Because they aren't even, the right questions aren't even being asked. The city didn't interview any of the small businesses as to why they left Town and Country. They didn't interview Stanford or Pally or the school district to see what they think about losing 25% of retail. The city didn't interview any of the residents who live nearby or the other small businesses locally to see how they think about, you know, this change. And how about the budget department of the city, given that such a large proportion of our city's budget comes from sales tax? And the change from, from retail to medical will negatively impact sales tax at a time when you all are already faced with, with guaranteed budget cuts if you don't tax large businesses. So, you know, I was really disappointed with the city staff report and I urge you to take a look at that. And then, so the commission needs someone like me who will reject that report and send it back. And commission needs someone like me that will help and like you all. And as you know, I wanted to be one of you all, but I'm happy to have you even hear me now. You know, it needs, the, the planning department needs better direction from the city. The city needs to tell the planning department their job isn't to process applications. Their job is to look at applications from the perspective of what is best for the community. What is in the best interest of the residents, the small businesses, the people who work here, you know, the community as a whole. And that's not happening now. A long answer, sorry.
So Rebecca, yeah, was a long answer. You have about a minute left.
Right.
You, do you want to just summarize?
You know, I again want to make the offer for any of you to reach out to me. I, from what I can tell, seeing you guys talk under, this is my summary to you, seeing each of you talk under circumstances that are not so time pressed. I really feel that I would like all of you personally, I'm not kidding. I'm a lawyer, I'm Jewish and I'm from the Midwest. Disagreement is built into my DNA. I don't like or dislike someone if I disagree with them. You know, I love hashing out hard problems with people. And, you know, I have, you know, if you ask my coworkers for what, you know, former coworkers at PayPal or at Trulia or anywhere else I worked, what I'm like to work with, they'll tell you exactly that. And that I'm the best teammate you can ask for. And I would like to be that for all of you and on behalf of the community of Powell Alto. Because we're, our community is worth it. Thank you for considering me.
Thank you for applying. Okay, so.
Mr. Mayor, you're on mute.
I'm sorry, I muted myself. So we are at a break. Thank you. We, if you can come back at 8:10, we'll have a 15 minute break. Thank you.
Okay, if you're back, you can turn your camera on. Great. All right, we have a call. If you want to go ahead and continue.
Yes, our next interviewee is Kathy Jordan. Kathy, I will promote you to panelists if you can unmute and turn on your video, we'll begin the interview.
Okay, welcome Kathy, I could see you. So I don't know if you've been listening, it's a 15 minute interview. We'll give you a minute or two to introduce yourself and then we'll start asking you questions.
Yes, thank you very much. Thanks for the opportunity to be considered for this position, Planning and Transportation Commission. I understand that all of you, as well as the commission, face a lot of difficult and very important decisions on the commission as well as the council, obviously. To introduce myself, I'm somebody who's come from the East Coast. Out here, attended Stanford, a longtime resident now in Palo Alto. Really have been around since approximately 1979. Deeply committed member of the community, two children going through Palo Alto Unified Schools. And I think I have some experiences to offer that may be of interest to planning and transportation. I've lived downtown, both in a multi-unit, multi-family community. Also, we built our home here, a single-family home. Went through the planning process in Palo Alto and built a modular home in Palo Alto when that was still unusual occurrence. I don't know if it is still unusual, but it certainly wasn't at the time, wasn't usual. So been a long time volunteer in the schools. I have one child still attending Pali. Volunteering on a classroom basis, have served in PTA positions. I currently serve as the president of our condo associations, homeowners association, Palo Alto Plaza homeowners association. It's downtown, it's complex across from Luca de Beppo, if you're familiar with that. There are three buildings there where Anna Esch's office is in our complex. H and R block, for example, so it's a mixed-use commercial and residential with an underground garage. So been working with my other owners on our board, dealing with the challenges of maintaining that complex, which is now about 40 years old. Navigating both city and state regulations. So have that perspective as well as a single-family home resident in a neighborhood here in Palo Alto. Thank you for the opportunity. I know I have a lot to learn. Hopefully I have some things to offer as well.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Tsukaku, you have a question?
Well, thank you. Thank you for your service to the community and thank you for applying. So lately, we've seen a lot of large development growth, development projects here in our city. For pre-screening, you might have seen some of that in the paper. How do we in our city balance development growth here in our city in terms of the traffic impacts and the need for housing and things like that?
Well, I have been following some of those developments and as I said, I think you all face a lot of challenging, difficult decisions and I recognize that. And you know, we've heard everyone talking about housing and of course of housing and there's an affordability crisis that of course is being faced not only in Palo Alto, but actually in many, many other cities across the nation reading about this. And I'm certainly someone that supports affordable housing for those who are low income, but also I'm quite concerned about preserving the quality of life in our community. And I've certainly have followed and watched the, the challenging discussions over office, you know, growth versus in jobs, housing balance. And one of the reasons I was interested in this to start with was because of the state, you know, attempting to get involved, more involved and usurp, usurp local land use decisions with SB 50 and others. And he took an interest at that time. Became a member of the group livable California that I think some of you on the council are may have heard of or be a part of and took it from there to learn more and more as I, as much as I could about the issue. And of course, then also the grade separation issue with Caltrain, of course, those local issues are important. So thank you for the question. I think it's a good one and I, and I respect all the, the work and effort you guys put in on this and can't hope to reach to your level on this or, or of knowledge, but I, I recognize that to be, continue to be a thriving community, we need to have a thriving business community. Retail as well as office and we also need to have you know, folks be able to live here and preserve our quality of life. So I guess those are my thoughts. I come at it from a residence perspective, being a resident. And so that's kind of my slant on things, I guess.
Thank you. Councilmember Cormer.
Hi, Ms. Jordan. It's nice to see you again. My question really has to do with how people do their work. So what are two words that people who have worked with you, either in your professional life or your personal or volunteer work would use to describe you and how you do your work? Two words that other people would use.
Um, well, I would imagine they would probably say I'm focused and work to try to solve problems and get things done. And you know, in my past life as a tennis player, you know, I served as the vice president of the Women's Tennis Association. And served in volunteer basis there and you know, all running the gamut to running the obstacle course at the Duvernac, you know, harvest carnival. So probably and all of you have done the same, right? So working to get things done and try to be focused on the job at home.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Phil Seth.
Hi Kathy, and thank you very much for applying and volunteering to come do this and meeting with us tonight. How did you happen to me, how did you happen to gravitate towards the Planning and Transportation Commission as opposed to some of the others, for example, Parks Rec or Utilities Commission and so forth? Can you give us a little color there?
Right. I mean, I, I think as I mentioned, you know, I took a heightened interest once the efforts on the state level to try to usurp local control became
Okay.
more and more intense and tried to start learning more and more about it at that time. Because and I'm, I'm somebody that, that has that, that experience of living in a multi-family complex here in Palo Alto, as well as a single-family home. And also that multi-family complex is a seven-minute walk from the Caltrain station. So it is a walkable. You can use mass transit. I've, I've somebody that commuted to two jobs living there in San Francisco. You know, have been reading a lot as I know you have, obviously are much more educated on this topic than I am, but about this sort of urban core model served by mass transit, which I think a lot of people share. However, not everybody is using mass transit the way, you know, these days. So I've been reading more and more about these issues and that's why I've taken an interest in planning and transportation.
Thank you.
It's an important issue, obviously too.
So I'll ask the question. So I think the last question on the application form is have you read certain city documents? And I'm curious if you've read some of our zoning code and if you have what your favorite section of it is.
Well, it's been a while since I read the zoning code, but we did build a house here in Palo Alto. And so we did have to go through the planning process and go through that. And we built a two-story home also, which was difficult. And I found interesting because your potential approval was dependent or seemed to be dependent on what your neighbors had done. Neighbors on either side of you had done, which you had no control over. And even, sorry.
Oh, you went through the individual review process then as well?
Correct. So even though, for example, in our case, even though all of our plans were in conformity with the city's regulations, still there was a seeming gray area as to whether we would receive approval because of what I just mentioned. So I thought that was quite interesting and an interesting experience, but I, I haven't been closely looking at the zoning regulation since I did try to look at the comprehensive plan prior to preparing for this. And I saw it was about six to 700 pages. And I think I skimmed a fair bit of it, but I did get knocked out after about page hundred 500.
I often read it to fall asleep at night.
That's a good tip. Thank you.
Any other questions from councilmembers? Yeah. So there's just a few minutes left. If you want to just kind of do a quick wrap up about your interest in the planning commission.
I, I think I've mentioned it. I know that you have a couple of very experienced, you know, incumbents already, and I respect what they have to say and I appreciate them. And thank you for the opportunity to be considered and thank you for your work on these difficult and important issues. You take a lot of crap with what you do. And so I'm sorry for that and appreciate all you do. Thank you.
Thank you for applying. We, we do have a lot of applicants, but I hope you'll apply again if you don't make it this time.
Thank you.
So next is Kevin Ma, I believe.
Yes, our next interview is Kevin Ma. Kevin, I'll promote you as panelist if you can unmute and turn on your video. We'll begin the interview.
Hi Kevin, welcome.
Evening.
And if you've been listening, so it's a 15-minute interview. I'll give you a minute or two to introduce yourself and tell us why you're interested. And then council members will start to ask you questions. So if you want to go ahead and introduce yourself, that'd be great.
Okay. Good evening, City Council. My name is Kevin Ma and I appreciate the opportunity to be interviewed for this position granted to general public. Palo Alto has been my first community of my own volition. It's not my parents' home in San Diego. It's not my college experience at Berkeley. This is my first community where I have a place of my own. Places to go, my own workplace, just, you know, a city of firsts. And I, in doing so, I've also contributed a lot to the community, spent a lot of my time despite being here only for two years and a lot of community engagement. I've worked as, I've been a volunteer at the city library. I've been a volunteer at the Stanley Healthcare. Volunteers, the women voters, as well as a bunch of other community groups. And I'm here to provide another contribution to the city of my, for my own time.
Great. Thank you for that. Vice Mayor Burr.
Good evening, Kevin. On Monday evening, we had a pre-screening of the proposed project at Fabian Way. And if I recall correctly, you spoke and said that you thought it should be twice the size of what was proposed. If I recall that correctly, can you expand a little bit on that? It's a 2.85 floor area ratio. So twice the size would be a 5.7 floor area ratio. Or maybe a building about 10 stories high. So can you explain a little bit on what your thinking is of that, the appropriateness of that kind of building and how that sort of building would be qualified under our, our current zoning allowances?
As far as my recollection goes, I actually was not at the Monday meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry. Then I have you mixed up with another speaker.
Yes. But on to the question of the Fabian Way development. I do is an interesting location. It is, as we know, currently a bunch of commercial buildings that would be yeah, the development as it would have stood would have contributed in our favor for our jobs to housing balance. But it is recognized that the community around it has a lot of concerns with the development that would have, should have been addressed by the developer.
Thank you.
Councilmember Cormer.
Thank you, Mary DeBois. Good evening, Mr. Ma, and thank you for applying. My question has to do with how you do your work and the same question I ask everybody. Which is what are two words that people who have worked with you, colleagues, either in your volunteer work or your professional work or your educational experience that they would use to describe you and how you do your work?
Um, the words I would come to mind for me is the word diligent and the word into much things. Basically, at this point, my schedule is basically full of community activities and various orgs. That's almost at this point affecting my work life-ish. But in all of them, I do have a deep connection to all of them. I'm not there to add stuff to my resume. I'm there to actually make efforts change, whether it is efforts that might require staying up until two in the morning or not. I have a terrible sleeping schedule in college.
Okay, thank you.
So I see your electrical engineering, computer science background as I do as well. Curious, how did you get interested in planning and transportation and these kinds of issues? What, what started to get you interested in this?
It comes from my experiences as a renter. I, everyone knows when you're in your Silicon Valley, things are expensive and that's basically bled over into the tech space because obviously as a tech worker, you make a lot of decisions based off your financial conditions and a lot of financial conditions drive people to act the same way as college, basically have a bunch of roommates to share what of housing you can as affordable prices. And then obviously there is a lot of the experiences in the industry where a lot of the industry obviously is considering to move into other places because everyone also recognizes that money is tight and perhaps a move to Denver might be more applicable. And as a result, that's why I'm getting interested in planning because obviously the situation we have now is a result of planning and I would like to see what I can do to contribute to plan for a better future.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Phil Seth and then Councilmember.
All these, all these things that the the city and the planning commission and the council and, and all of us, the community grapple with is you know, the trade-offs between a lot of different things and, and what's possible and not possible, given certain, certain constraints and so forth. As an elected, as, as a city official in the hypothetical situation that might arise, where your own personal views on such trade-offs don't match those of a majority of the community. How would you resolve that tension?
I will make it clear about my personal convictions about the project or the issue at hand. But I would generally defer to what the majority of the community at large would have as their opinion. General speaking. Obviously, there's a, there's an inherent question over the community we represent. And one of the things as a young person, as a renter, to also represent is to represent the community in the future, the future generations that make, make up the city.
So the people who have not yet moved here, representation.
Or it could be your children. Like at some point, this is going to be someone else's community in 40 years from now. The question is whether we're prepared for that now or prepare for that 40 years from now.
Understand.
Councilmember Koo.
So my question was very similar to Councilmember Phil Seth. So I'll ask something different. Thank you so much, Mr. Ma, for applying. You mentioned about something that You mentioned about something better. What is that something better that in your definition?
Something better with regards to kind of things you always brought in about this community, questions about safety of our neighborhoods, questions about the affordability of this to our future residents, or something better about, let's say, there's like green arena time of COVID or something like that. So it's more like, it's like there's something like the thing you talk about when you're like, when you travel to other places, like what makes people travel to other places? Is it giving them your perspective of what might be possible in back? If you want to bring it back to their neighborhoods, something like that.
Thank you.
Great. So we have just a few minutes left. Oh, I see. Sorry, Vice Mayor Burr again.
Yeah, sorry. Just to follow up to my previous question, Kevin, I was double checking my notes. And are you sure that you didn't speak on the Fabian Way project with the comments that I referred to?
Yes, I deliberately avoided any comments in preparation for this meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Great. So there's just a few minutes left if you want to kind of summarize your qualifications and interests. That'd be great.
My qualifications would be involving greater outreach into the community because we recognize that planning is a very political act, which requires as much community consensus as we can in order to build a future that is at least acceptable to all of us, as well as diligent to figure out, at the end of day, I do want to know direct answers from all sides to make sure that whatever decisions we make in the city are as much as accurate as possible and takes the community at heart.
Okay, well, thank you very much. And I don't know if you've heard me say this to others, we have a lot of applicants for this position. So if you don't make it, please consider applying again. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our next applicant is Jessica Resmini. Jessica, I will promote to you as panelist. If you can unmute and turn on your video, we'll begin the interview.
Hi, can you hear us?
Yeah, good evening, guys.
Great. So I don't know if you've been watching this 15-minute interview. I'll give you a couple of minutes at the beginning to introduce yourself and your interest, and then we'll start asking you questions.
Excellent. Thank you, guys, for all the time you're taking tonight. I don't know about you, but I'm pretty fried on the Zoom, so hopefully it's not going to be too long of an evening for you guys. So I've lived in Palo Alto for about 15 years and I'm married to a native Palo Alto. He, his family came here in the 1960s and now we're raising our two kids here. So we've been here for a while, have some roots. And we don't really plan on going anywhere. And so it seems like a natural step to sort of get involved at the community level and help shape the future. So I'm a practicing architect here and then also avidly involved in PAUSD, Aloney, JLS. We have a kid that's starting at Pali coming up. So there's definitely a lot to be involved in here in Palo Alto and can be quite overwhelming. My specialties that I think I have to offer to the committee is analyzing data, research, empathizing and really trying to listen and facilitate any sort of group effort. So you guys have amazing applicants this session, so hopefully you won't even need me. But I feel like, you know, there's so many people who have given so much great time to our city that at some point you have to kind of pay your dues and roll the proceeds and get involved as well. So that's a little window into me and happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you for applying. Councilmember Phil Seth.
Hi, yeah. Thanks for joining us and applying for this. I actually have two questions. One, you know, how did you, how did you gravitate towards planning and transportation commission as opposed to, for example, the architectural view board? Because you've got a lot of expertise there as well. That's one. And the second, you know a lot about ADUs. So are there any simple things we can do to make it easier to get ADUs built? Thanks.
I know. Well, hopefully it's not a polarizing response, but actually Adrian Fine asked me to apply. And I think that was when you guys didn't have very many applicants. And I couldn't very well say no to somebody who has given so much of his life to the city. So I threw my hat in. And hopefully he asked me to apply only because, you know, I, hopefully I can, I am a neutral person. I think the ADUs have become very hot and heavy, which I did not even anticipate at all. That's been really fascinating to sort of, an eye-opening to see. Definitely has been a weird experience that the state has sort of like mandated a lot of these timetables and whatnot, impose this on the cities, which is unfortunate. You're right. So I'm pretty intimately involved. And it's difficult when things get so polarizing because I honestly think most things are opportunities. And hopefully can be, there's not mutually exclusive goals that can be solved with, for example, ADUs and a lot of other elements. So yeah, that's a tough question, how to get more ADUs built. And hopefully with the ADU task force, which is kind of a group of architects and professionals that we have assembled. And I think you guys are pretty familiar with them, just trying to provide information to staff and you guys as needed. And, you know, it's a complex issue. There's so much involved. I mean, editing the zoning code, taking into account, you know, I mean, I intimately know the impacts that neighbors feel as well. And so navigating that and having to answer to them, you know, the staff has to answer to neighbors when that can be negatively impact and you guys have to. So it's not an easy task.
Thank you.
Thanks. I just, I just note that it's not just the state, you know, we've given ourselves a comp plan and target as well. And independent of the state, we need to meet that. So thanks.
Yeah, good point.
Councilmember Cormac.
Thank you, Mayor DuBois. Good evening, Ms. Resmini. I hope that's close on how I pronounce your last name. And as I recall, Councilmember Phil says she and other people submitted like a 12-point list. Maybe it was 17-point things about what we could do. So it's good. We didn't, we can't use up all of her 15 minutes on the 17 points.
I can't keep track of more than two at once.
I know, I know. It was a lot.
So thank you for including the letter of recommendation in there. That was helpful. And it gets at what my question is, which is how people do their work, which I, which is important to all of us. So my question is, what are two words that people who have worked with you, either in your architecture practice or in the school district or in the ADU collective, would use to describe you and how you do your work?
Yeah, so I have, I mean, me personally, I have a very regimented process that I do when I do my work. So it's definitely like a five-phase process that I'm very adamant about doing. So I guess that's sort of regimented when I, when I take on a project. And then through that, basically analyzing and being able to filter information. So, I mean, practicing architecture is all about taking in information and data that a client has that the zoning ordinances provide and trying to spit something out. And it's different every time. There's a different set of regulations. So so I think being regimented and analyzing data and then with that, especially with architecture, there's a whole human side that has to come along, so that empathy piece and really kind of thinking about the human side. So I think some of those traits really resonate with maybe a similar process that might happen well on the PTC committee, which is analyzing data, taking, taking the comprehensive plan or whatever rules and regulations that we've all agreed on as a community, filtering the parameters and then being able to produce, you know, advice. Or, so hopefully that's helpful, a little long-winded.
No, thank you so much.
Councilmember Stone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hi, Jessica. Nice to meet you. Thanks for applying. I was glad to see your application. You mentioned several times the importance of affordable housing. What do you think the PTC and the city could be doing to be able to promote greater affordable housing production?
I have no idea. Yeah, I mean, I think it's a near and dear issue to everybody. Nobody's going to deny that that's the task at hand, right? That is the urgency that kind of is at our doorstep right now. So I think a lot of the things that PTC and the council have been doing is great. I think one, I guess one thing we could all try to think about is we can't, we can't have things take two years to come to fruition, right? So we do have people with good ideas. We do have money. You know, there's a lot of companies. And we've got the regulations, we've got the vision. And so I, you know, and I don't know exactly how PTC might actually take participation in that. But how do we become more efficient with the goals that we set and meeting them? I think is probably the short answer to that. It's a big one.
Yes, it is. Thank you.
So I'll ask a quick question. So with your involvement in the ADU collective, I guess, how would you handle that when zoning updates and things come that deal with single-family homes, even if they're not, you know, or in ADUs specifically?
You mean, maybe, are you talking about maybe like a conflict of interest or?
Yeah, exactly.
I, that's a good question. I mean, I don't have personal agendas. So I have clients and I have rules. And, you know, each client has their agenda and then the set of rules that the city sets for. So I guess you're wondering if I'm making recommendations.
Well, yeah, it's a source of income if you're changing the rules around ADUs. There could definitely be a conflict of interest, but
Yeah.
it could extend to things like setbacks in R1 zoning and things and.
Yeah, I mean, I think the same could be said for any real estate attorney or any property management person that sits on any sort of committee. I think, you know, do you hold yourself to a level of integrity of interpretation? And, you know, my goal is to put myself out of business in five years with ADUs. And that will be put, you know, that we've done all the ideas that are potential and move on to the next, next thing. And they're, so, yeah, I mean, I can guarantee you there wouldn't be any conflict of interest.
Vice Mayor Burr.
Yes. At the risk of continuing on the ADU topic, but it's an area that you have a lot of insights on. And I just mentioned, I think, it's before, we actually initiated an ADU expansion in late 2016, preceding the state's work. But now we have senior and the city has adopted the junior ADUs. To what extent do you think that we're going to see ADUs that are meeting affordability categories, whether they're low income or the moderate income? Do you have any thoughts on that?
It's a really good question because that's, I mean, that's the million-dollar question is what are these ADUs actually being used for?
Hopefully, it's not a million-dollar question.
Right. Definitely is a million-dollar question. You know what? I would love to see the city get a little ahead of what the state. I mean, right now, we're just kind of responding to what the state is kind of mandating. And we're actually under construction on a multi-generational home. And so I think we have a lot of people that want to live here. We have a lot of older people that want to stay. We have a lot of young families. And what studies show is that if we can integrate different types of residents together, that becomes like a better fabric. And so I've, I've worked on a lot of multi-generational homes where they've done all sorts of conversions and that sort of thing. So I guess it's not a black and white question where it's like, is there a tenant? Is there a landlord kind of situation? I actually think the multi-generational thing is going to be huge and can be a really great way to kind of think a little broader because I don't think the next generation is looking to have a 6,000-square-foot home or a 4,000-square-foot home. It's a much more agile lifestyle that I think we're going to see. Even a lot of the older people I work with, you know, they want to downsize so they can either have family come and live with them or travel or be more flexible, have a home in another place and come back. And so I'm kind of digressing a little bit. Your question is how long before the ADUs actually start to? You know, I just finished an ADU where there was quite a few issues with a neighbor and it's being rented to a teacher who teaches at Keys, you know? And so I'm seeing it happen. You know, people are moving in. I do have an ironic picture, though, of an ADU that's being worked on by these guys. And out front of the ADU are their suitcases. You know, and it's like, these are the guys that need this ADU. How do we, how do we connect that? So, but I think, I think the ADUs are one of many solutions. I mean, it's a small scratch. And I, you know, I think that they can be done well. And they can become part of a good part of our, one of many solutions.
Great. Well, Kathy, I'm sorry. Jessica, thank you for applying. There's just, there's just about a minute left if you want to summarize. And also, I don't know if you heard me, but we have a lot of applicants. So if you don't make it this time, please consider applying again.
Yeah, absolutely. I applied once before as well. You know, I think, you know, you do have a lot of great applicants. I'm actually hopeful one of them will get it instead of me because I'm exhausted. But, but I would be honored and happy to serve on the PTC and work with you guys. And I think, you know, right now, we are at a time of opportunity, honestly. We do, it's a whole new, new world that we're entering into. So it's, it's exciting time, as dark as it has been. So thank you, guys.
All right, thank you.
Good luck tonight.
Okay, I think we're up to our last candidate. I know the Danny and Jessica have been communicating with the PTC meeting. Is Doria the place where she can join us?
Yes, she's currently trying to join right now. She's logging on to the Zoom. She just needs to log into the Zoom app in order to join the meeting.
Oh, thank you, guys, for all getting through this tonight. I think we kept mostly the schedule. Oh, thank you, guys, for all getting through this tonight. I think we kept mostly the schedule.
Thanks for the music while we're waiting.
Yes. Can you hear that pretty easily? Yeah, it's two rooms away.
It's the right genre for the breaks.
Yeah.
If it was, you know, Stravinsky or something, it'd be a little bit.
It's like, we can't actually chat about much city-related. So Greer, it sounds like there'll be students on campus.
Yeah, they're trying to figure out the details, but it looks like, looks like starting in March, it's going to happen. But I don't hold much stock in any of, this has happened so many times where we've been told students are coming back and that it doesn't happen. So we'll see. At least the case count has been encouraging.
Tom, you could do a PSA on people getting tested. That would probably be permissible if anyone's watching. It was repeat from Monday.
No, seriously, it's, there's so much excess testing capacity right now. And we really need to know if some of these new variants are coming. It's, you know, people should get tested. It's like, people have gotten comfortable, I think.
Hi, thank you all for waiting and for your patience. So Doria is currently going to try dialing in. I believe I do see her number. Let's see. Doria, are you able to unmute yourself if you dial star six? Oh, there she is.
I think I joined.
I was able to send Doria a panelist invitation.
Doria, we just see your forehead. If you want to adjust your camera a little bit. Can you hear us?
Finally, yes. Sorry for the confusion.
Great. I said your camera's a little mis-aimed if you pull it down. Now you're muted. Okay, so you've done this before. It's a 15-minute interview. If you want to spend a minute or two introducing yourself and telling us why you want to re-up, and then we'll start to ask you questions.
Sure, I'll just be really brief because I think most of you know me. So I was born in Chicago, grew up in the suburbs, went back to school for college in Chicago, moved to Palo Alto, I think in the mid-'80s. And I stopped working in my chosen field, which was independent film, feature film production in around 2000. And I started getting involved in neighborhood with my Neighborhood Association and from there in city stuff. And that's kind of how I got involved in city commissions and committees and whatnot. So that's kind of just brief. And I think that most of you know me, so I think that's about all.
Okay.
I'll just hand it over to you.
So Councilmember Tanaka.
Well, Doria, it's great seeing you again. You, Dorian and I served on the CTR board together. So thank you for your service on the PTC. Dorian, one thing I noticed from the minutes and your work on the PTC is that it seems like there's never really been a project that you could support in the four years that you served. And I'm not sure whether it's just, does it happen to be the miss I read? Or I missed some other minutes that came out for the PTC. But it just seemed like there's never ever a project that, that, you know, was good for the city or that you could recommend for approval. And I, and I don't know if that's actually true or just like I said, my sampling of it. But if it is true, or I guess I'd just love to get your perception as to, or your kind of rationale as to why pretty much every project is rejected. But maybe you could just explain or give your rationale. I'd love to hear it.
Yeah, no, I think it's important to be honest and vet these projects for consistency against when it's a project application against the legal documents of the city. And I think your sampling may have given you slightly wrong impression of me. There's plenty of projects that I have voted yes on. One that comes to mind recently is the Italian, former Italian restaurant on Cal Ave. So, and there's lots of others.
Councilmember Cormac.
Good evening, Ms. Suma. It's nice to see you. So my question has to do with how people do their work. And what I'm looking for is two words that people who work with you would describe you and how you do your work. So colleagues either from your independent film production time or working on the Residents Association or PTC or anything else, you don't have to say what. What are two words that people would use to describe you and how you do your work?
I would say prepared and thorough.
And concise, apparently. Those sound vaguely familiar. Thank you.
Councilmember Stone.
Hey, Doria. Good to see you. Thank you for your, for your service. So you've been serving on the PTC for a while now. Do you have one particular regret or frustration of something, of kind of a goal of yours that you haven't been able to achieve, that you're hoping to be able to achieve in another term?
Well, yes, so much of our work is applicant-driven. And there's not as much opportunity for us to address pressing policy issues. And keeping in mind the council's priorities for this year, I think even more so because of the pandemic, we have an opportunity to help with that. And case in point, we were just reviewing an application by the owners of Town and Country to allow them to change the ground floor use and have medical on the ground floor. And we were, I'm so flustered because we were right in the middle of trying to get a motion done and I had to leave and you were early. But it brought to mind something really new that we're going to have to deal with, which is on top of our traditional concerns about zoning and getting things right, there's this extra layer and it's at a super painful time when people are really hurting landlords and tenants. So I think we can really help. I think there's going to be a lot of work this year that has a different sort of tone to it because of the pandemic. And I think throw us stuff and let us help with it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Phil.
Well, I was going to kind of ask your thoughts on some of the same turf that Greer just covered, which is, how can we, how can we, how can we make better use of the PTC? And, you know, and what should we be doing differently to help you guys?
Well, we've had two years where we've had, and last year was crazy, so I don't think that counts as much. But the year before, half of our meetings were canceled. And I think part of that is staffing. And so maybe if council is more focused on, even more focused on directing staff to give us the policy work that you most need help on. And I think that's, obviously, it's going to be COVID recovery. And a lot of that is going to include traditional issues that come to the Planning Commission, such as zoning, like what came up tonight. And then certainly with affordable housing and affordable housing choices, I think we're going to have, I think we're going to have to really be, start getting creative with that. So I would just say more direction and understanding that staff, and understanding that staff does bring us issues of particular interest based on the priorities of the council. They do prioritize those, of course, but maybe even more so. And keep a good mix of perspectives on the PTC because whenever it's, whenever there's not a multitude, multiplicity of ideas, we end up coming up short because we, we just, we're in an echo chamber. We don't get other people's good ideas. And no one of us has the perfect answer every time.
So I'll ask you a question. I asked several other people, like, the last question on the application is, have you read certain city documents? So I wonder, have you read the city's zoning code? And if you have, what's your favorite section?
I'm kind of a Title 18 girl, to be honest. But, yeah, I refer to the municipal code quite a bit because I also find that even, even though variances have come to us over time, for instance, over the last four and whatever years it is, I still have to go back and read those words again. And the findings for variances are very simple, actually. But each time we have a project that asks, asks for one, I really have to go reread it and think about it in the context of that project. But I am kind of partial to Title 18, which is.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Q.
So in line with the same question, thank you for reapplying, Doria. Which part of the comp plan is your favorite?
Um, well, this comp plan, I feel kind of strongly about the comp plan. As you know, because you were on the comp plan committee with me, and we worked pretty hard on that for a long time. The only part we didn't work on was the housing element. Once again, land use is of great interest to me, but I don't know. It's like picking your favorite child. It's, it all needs to be there. I also think the natural element, we did, we did a lot of improvement on that, that section. So, but maybe land use.
Thank you.
So I'm not seeing any other hands. So if you have, want to just kind of wrap up and, again, thank you for applying. And.
Thank you very much for interviewing all of us. And, yeah, and I'm sorry, I had such trouble getting in. And it was kind of, it was kind of busy at the other meeting I was in also. So we'll go back and get back to the motion, I think. But, yeah, I really would. I appreciate the interview. I appreciate you interviewing all the candidates. I really would like to serve another term. You know, you don't come onto the Planning Commission knowing how to do it as well as you possibly could. You have to learn that. So I think I have a lot to offer because of my experience. And I really would like to serve my community. I'm fortunate in that I don't have to work at this point in my life. And this is something to volunteer doing of importance that I really, really enjoy. So I just appreciate it very much.
Great. Well, thank you. And we'll let you get back to your meeting.
Okay. Thank you, guys. Sorry for the confusion.
It's great. I think with that, we are finished. So thank you all again. And meeting adjourned.